Call to order the Centennial School District School Board Work Session Regular Meeting for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Mrs. Roos, could you do a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brancato.
Here.
Mrs. Crawson.
Present.
Mr. Gindhart. Mr. Godickson.
President.
Mr. Hartline.
Present.
Uh, Mrs. Lynch.
Present.
Dr. McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mr. Sadowski.
Here.
We have nine members present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in this world, with just us.
Thank you. Announcements. Pursuant to the school code and reiterated in Board Policy 006, Section 4P, the vote on the September 30th Agenda on Item 3.9, related to an increase in hourly rate for CDL drivers, did not have the affirmative votes of the full membership of the board. Therefore, the vote was nullified and did not count. The increase in the hourly rate for CDL drivers is being presented on tonight's agenda under 7.1. Thank you. Melissa McDonald? Or Alexis Crawley? Alexis is our William Tennant representative, and she is going to read the updates for both Middle Bucks and William Tennant. Thank you.
Hello, I'm very excited to be back with you all this month. To start, at William Tennant, we had a very successful Homecoming Game and Dance. The Homecoming King and Queen were announced during the football game at October 3rd at halftime, and the nominees for the Homecoming Queen were Lindsay Catoni, Alexis Crawley, Natalie Dale, Alexa DePaolo, Kalen George, and Angelina Zuccaro. The Homecoming King nominees were Peter Comans, Derek Gunther, Samuel Lee, Julio Mattos, Trey Knoll, and Jojo Uter. And the winners were Lindsay Catoni and Julio Mattos. Um, while the Homecoming Game Dance is usually held in the high school cafeteria, this year it was held on October 4th and was moved into the school lobby, which is much bigger. So our usual attendance of 600 students was now increased to over 800, and overall, this dance was a big success. Additionally, Powderpuff applications have begun, and the teams this year will be Senior Storm versus the Junior Jackpot. The Powderpuff game will be held on November 12th at 7:00 PM. In athletics, senior nights are being held for each sport to celebrate the 12th graders who have put much dedication into their sport. In addition, our school hosted the annual William Tennant Cross Country Invitational on October 4th, and there were over 1,000 runners in the meet and more than 60 teams in attendance. On October 7th, senior Christina Bensonova won her volleyball career 500 kills against Ben Salem. Our boys soccer team is currently complete competing in the playoffs and is having a very successful season with 10 wins, five losses, and one tied game. Their next game is senior night, um, tomorrow, Wednesday, October 15th. Um, our school introduced touchscreens outside the gym and auditorium where you can find teams, clubs, activity records, and will include all Hall of Fame inductees. In addition, inductions for various honor societies are being held within the next month to commemorate the hard work and dedications that many of our students have put into their academics. In addition, the William Tennant Key Club will be holding the biannual blood drive on November 5th and 6th in hopes to get many donations. Our school's music department is in the process of preparing for the winter concert and select choir concert with the Wormminster Symphony Orchestra. And furthermore, William Tennant's fall play Bad Auditions by Bad Actors is starting its rehearsals for its shows on November 7th and 8th, and it is progressing well. The department cannot wait for this show to be shown to the public. In the Middle Bucks Institute of Technology, this month, MBIT is proud to announce the launch of the Fall Dual Enrollment Program in Show to Business in partnership with Bucks County Community College, which provides students with the opportunity to earn college credits while completing high school. Next, our adult education programs also continue to grow, serving community members who are looking to develop new skills and advance their careers. We are preparing for our annual open house on Thursday, November 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, where families can tour our programs, meet instructors, and connect with current students. Next, on October 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, MBIT will host its Occupational Advisory Committee meeting, bringing together industry professionals and teachers to ensure our programs stay aligned with workforce needs. In addition, October is a month filled with recognition with Dental Hygiene Month, Careers in Construction Month, Physical Therapy Month, and National First Responders Day, all honoring vital fields that directly connect to the skills and training offered at MBIT. We're also excited to share that MBIT hosted the MBIT Alumni Association Kickoff Event on Wednesday, October 8th. This very successful event marks the beginning of a new tradition to connect past graduates with our current students, teachers, and programs. Alumni will have the chance to share their career journeys, network with each other, and give back by supporting the next generation of MBIT students. Building a strong alumni committee will not only celebrate the accomplishments of our graduates, but also inspire current students with real-world success stories. Um, thank you for taking the time to stay updated on all the exciting happenings at William Tennant and MBIT, and be sure to follow MBIT on social media to keep up with the latest news, achievements, and events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Luca Baal.
Thank you, Mrs. Brancato. Good evening, everyone. So it's been a really busy fall season of sports and activities across the district, and it is especially so for one of our hardest-working groups, and that is our high school marching band. If you've ever been a band parent or had a child in band or been affiliated with it, it is a labor of love, and it is intense. There's a lot of time, a lot of practices, tremendous amount of work behind the scenes. And this coming Saturday, the Centennial Marching Band is hosting a very special event, and so here to tell us a little bit more this evening is Mr. Sal Tapalo. He is the president of the William Tennant Music Boosters Association, and he's going to give us a preview of what you can expect on Saturday. So, Mr. Tapalo, welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Luca Baal, President Brancato, and the school board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Sal Tapalo, and while some of you may know me as the president of Ivy Lambert, it is my distinct privilege to appear before you tonight as the president of the William Tennant Music Boosters Association. It's still hard to say. The association is a nonprofit organization whose stated mission is the promotion and support of the musical arts at the high school through the program's support of the marching band and the jazz band. The William Tennant Music Boosters are proud to share with you all the exciting news that we will be hosting our 29th Annual Celebration of Bands at William Tennant High School this Saturday, October 18th. The gates open at 4:00 PM, with the first band performing at 5:00 PM. We will be hosting five other bands and providing hospitality meals to all of their music directors, bus drivers, and the judges for the event. The celebration of bands is our opportunity to showcase our high school and its thriving marching band community. We will be hosting a number of local area high school bands as well as competitors from New Jersey and Delaware. The association has been planning this event since the beginning of Band Camp in early August. The association at this time would like to present the superintendent and the members of the board with complimentary entrance tickets for two people to the event and a copy of our ad book for the event, provided by my lovely wife. The ad book is a great testament to the support of our business communities who sponsor our mission to promote the musical arts. We are expecting it to be a great evening of musical performances and look forward to your attendance. On a personal note, I am the parent of a fourth-year participating senior of the marching unit. My daughter Lex is serving as captain of the color guard this year, and I would be remiss if I did not take the time to applaud the tireless efforts and commitment of our band director,
First time we ever got one.
Mr. Nicholas Seifert and his wonderful staff, who continue to teach musicianship and performance discipline, but also repeatedly teach the importance of working as a team, building a collaboration, and being a contributing member of a community, as well as a soulless when appropriate. And as a fourth-year parent of the Music Boosters Association and a second-year member of the executive board, I would like to take a moment to thank all the parent members of the Boosters Association, whose tireless efforts, week after week, make this event and others a possibility for our kids. I hope to see you all on Saturday. Go Marching Panthers. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work going into the event, look forward to being there, 29 proud years, so thank you so much. All right, next up, um, on October 2nd of 2025, Centennial received some positive news regarding the refinancing of a bond, and at this time, I'd like to invite our chief financial officer, Mr. Tom Greenwood, to the podium to share an overview of that. Mr. Greenwood.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Luca Baal. Uh, board members should have the presentation at your seat along with a one-pager sort of overview of what we're gonna go over. As Dr. Luca Baal pointed out, it's been a busy fall, uh, and that's certainly been busy in the finance and business office. Beginning in September, um, we began working on the refinancing, preparing for our, our phone calls with Moody's and, and to establish our rating, uh, as well as working on the supporting documents and plans for the refinancing. A couple of points, uh, on the September 16th, Moody's had announced our ratings. We had a, a call on the 16th. They announced our rating on September 25th. The district is proud to, was very happy to see an AA2 rating, which is sort of the second highest, uh, among, uh, among the rating profile for Moody's. They, Moody's issued that press release. Factors contributing to that rating included a healthy financial position, strong fund balance, positive enrollment trends, which are different. You know, many schools are losing enrollment. Uh, as the, uh, as the lady at Moody's shared with us, right, we are one of the districts, uh, that is, it has been positive, uh, over that window that they reviewed, uh, and a stable tax base. Um, they go on to talk about, uh, factors that lead, that could lead to an upgrade in our rating, uh, as well as factors that could lead to a downgrade in our rating. Uh, but all of that produced very positive energy around our refinancing, and as I worked with a team at PFM to begin marketing our sale of bonds, uh, all of that made up part of that. On October 2nd, um, we had this, our bond sale, uh, which was fantastic. It will generate savings of $1.3 million, you know, almost 1.3, uh, 1,351,621,000 dollars, which is outstanding news. It is really a testament to the district, it's a testament to the work that we're doing, um, and is more than double the savings originally anticipated when we met with the finance committee in May to talk about it. That number we were anticipating was $582,000. So this dwarfed, uh, in, in all, all, all ways the, the savings that was going to be generated. Uh, so we were very excited. Uh, I was in on the 2nd that day. You can watch it sort of live. Um, you can see the screen, you can see people placing bids, uh, and, and securing the bond, so it was very exciting. Um, it started out a little slow. I was, to be honest, it was a little worried. Uh, it was, you know, school was closed that day, but I'm in my office, screens up, ready to rock and roll, and, uh, it didn't, nothing was happening, so it was like banging on the screen a little bit. Uh, but it turned around and, uh, and the sale progressed. Uh, and when it was all said and done, it was a very positive event. A broad group of buyers, including Northern Trust, Black Rock, Breckenridge, Nuvine, uh, to name a few, so it was a good group of buyers, and that strong demand really pushed up our savings, uh, sort of in the final hours by upwards of over $200,000, which was, uh, exciting and really a testament to, uh, PFM and PNC's team that we were working with through that event. So they really helped maximize our sale and, uh, and total refinancing. Um, you know, in consultation with the PFM team, um, you know, stronger-than-expected results certainly attributed to market timing. Uh, sometimes it's better to be, be lucky than good. I think we were lucky on our timing. Uh, as news sort of fell through in September, uh, the bond market began to take a lift, uh, certainly within weeks of that window. We really got some positive news, uh, which was outstanding. And the fact that, uh, our rating is so strong, that rating is worth, uh, between a half a million dollars and a full million dollars, depending on where you landed, right? If you, uh, if you were to drop A grade to an AA3 rating, you know, that could cost us uh, a half a million dollars, right? If you were to drop two spots to an A2, uh, that would, or, yeah, an A2, that would cost us A1, I'm sorry. That would cost us almost a million dollars in savings. You would have lost a million dollars of that savings. But we didn't. It's good, all good news. Um, compared to our budget, we're gonna save over $111,000 this year, compared to the '25, '26 budget, and happily reporting that between the, uh, refinancing that took place last September and this most recent one on October 2nd, we will have saved the district $5,483,624, which is a significant savings. That savings is over time, uh, so it's not tomorrow, and it's not a one-fa swoop, but it is savings, uh, that the district will realize. We've talked about our debt, uh, balance and our, you know, expense ratio to that. Uh, Centennial is one of the higher, uh, where our debt, uh, debt service is upwards at 12%. We talked about that last year when we did this first refinancing. We're ticking away, and we're working that number down a little bit. So that's all very positive, uh, news, and we're very excited to share it. So thank you very much.
Mr. Greenwood, um, you said over time. How long? How long of a timeframe till we see the savings?
The savings you'll see immediately, so, right, but the five point, uh, the $100,000, for instance, right, will be over the term uh, between then, over the next probably 13 years. That's as far out as our debt goes. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. For, for this series. The other series was, I think, 12 years?
Yes.
So the last one, so we're one year into 12 years for last year's debt service, and then this year, it's, yeah, basic math tells you it's about another 12 years.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Fantastic. Thank you very much.
And thank you again, Mr. Greenwood, for your, your work and the work of the team to, to bring the savings to us. Um, just, uh, two more quick things. Um, I have started a series of parent and community engagement meetings. I'm meeting with the community at each of our six schools, and I'll be doing so several times throughout the course of the year, so those meetings are underway. Our next meeting is scheduled for Log College Middle School next Monday at 6:30, so looking forward to engaging those, and appreciate everybody who's come out for those as well. And, um, I am six meetings in to our student focus groups across the district. Um, we have six down, and I think, Mrs. Roos, 40, 42 to go or so, so we have about 48 of those meetings set up with the goal of speaking with approximately 1,200 students in small-group capacity. And I will say that just sitting and talking with our students, we really truly have insightful, mature, incredibly engaging, just wonderful, wonderful students, and I get a cross-section of, of the student population in every one of these meetings and every one of these focus groups, and we talk about- And we talk about their learning in class. We talk about school culture. We talk about how Centennial has helped them to prepare for the next level of success. We speak about a number of different things. And it's been really, really wonderful. And I look forward to putting together a comprehensive report for the board and also for our faculty and staff. And that will be shared later in the spring. And then we will use that in tandem with our strategic plan and also with our goals and district initiatives moving forward so that we really are addressing the needs in real time that students are sharing. So it's been a pleasure, and more to come moving forward. And at our next meeting, we are excited because we are going to show you a wonderful video in celebration of Principal's Month, which is the month of October. And that is all. Mrs. Brancato, back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Godikson, it's your turn.
Thank you so much. Turning the mic on here. Approval of the agenda for tonight. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 4.1 approves the October 14th, 2025 board agenda as per attached. Are there any corrections that are, need to be made that are allowed by PA law?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crossen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes nine, nothing.
Community comments? So, nice. When you get up to the podium, please just state your name, what township you live in, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello. William Brandonberger, 1319 West County Line Road. I'm obviously a Centennial school bus driver. I'm here actually to start with the most important part of the increase that has been spoken about, voted for, passed, but there was some, I don't know what you would call it, but some reason technically that it was not. But the most important part of that is the fact that the $30 an hour pay will allow us to recruit. We don't have enough school bus drivers. We have mechanics driving school buses. We have office personnel driving school buses. And the other school systems that we compete with may or may not be paying more. I know Mike had said that they all pay over 30. I don't know what they pay. But if they're paying 30, we're paying 27, how are we gonna recruit? So that is the most important part of this. I would like to get $30 an hour. That's fine. I've been there seven years. I make $27 an hour. Again, though, we're at a situation where we're behind the eight ball. Every day, every day, we're hunting, figuring out, and adjusting things to service the students. This won't solve the recruiting problem, but it will certainly help the recruiting problem. During the last vote, there was three comments, I guess, that against the fact of going to the $30. One was the fact was that there was a $4 million shortfall, whatever it is, $4 million deficit. And I'm not sure that that should be put back on the bus drivers. That's kind of like asking us to clean up for a party we didn't go to. The other piece of that was, I think someone over here wanted to make sure, or to research before they voted, whether or not the cafeteria workers, the other people that work in the school system
Only have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. That they wouldn't get something. That's, I would like them to get some. The final thing is that that $270,000 this would cost compared to the $4 million would be less than 7%. Thank you.
Mr. Godikson?
Thank you for your comments. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have 12 items. Can we move them all together? Seeing no objections, we'll do so. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.1 approves the minutes from the September 9th, 2025 work session, regular school board meeting. 6.1B approves the minutes from the September 30th, 2025 committee of the whole meeting. 6.2 personnel. 6.2A terminations. 6.2B resignations. 6.2C authorization to employ. 6.2D leaves of absence. 6.2E change of status. 6.2F mentor teachers. And 6.2G co-curricular clubs and activities. Exceptions to policy, we have none. Appointments, we have none. Waivers, we have none. 6.6 conferences and travel, we have none. 6.7 bids and votes, none. 6.8 assemblies, speakers, and programs, we have none. 6.9 contracts, licenses, and services. 6.9A approves the renewal of the memorandum of understanding with the Bucks County Children and Youth for the district to provide transportation for foster students that are best determined to remain in the district for schooling. Costs to be determined based on, upon need. 6.9B approves the renewal of the memorandum of understanding with the WON Institute of Graduate Studies to provide services to the district employees at a reduced rate. No cost to the district. 6.10 textbooks, we have none. 6.11 acceptance of donations, grants, and requests. 6.11A accepts the generous donation in the amount of $4,000 to be added to the social workers fund to be used for students in need. 6.12 changes of academic programs, positions, and stipends, none. Second by Mr. Hardline. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I will be abstaining on 6.1.
A and B?
Sorry, I was absolutely.
So all except for one item passes by nine, nothing, and 1, 8, 0, 1. Moving on to new business. We only have one item. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 7.1 approves an increase in the hourly rate of $3.70 per hour for current CDL drivers and an increase in the hourly rate for newly hired drivers from $26.30 per hour to $30 per hour, effective October 4th, 2025, to increase recruitment and retention. The estimated cost to the district is $275,000, which can be reduced as overtime costs are minimized along with the reduction of outside transportation contractors and the bus patrol proceeds.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ginhardt. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Thank you. What I'd like to discuss is, or have a discussion on the bus patrol. I know that this was brought up at the last meeting, but I don't recall what school districts had bus patrol and what was their income from it. I know the bus patrol, per se, is with the township, with the school district and the company. I would also like to know, bus patrol, when they would install the equipment into our buses. This is a fantastic safety feature. But I'd just like a little bit more information on it. So, Mr. Greenwood, would you be so kind?
Just to point out, this was approved at the last board meeting.
Yes, I understand that.
Yep.
But it's also incorporated as a measure into this agenda, so it's open for discussion.
So, so bus patrol has a growing list of schools that are participating. It is, as Mrs. Lynch said and Mr. Godikson, an exceptional safety opportunity for our buses. The township I live in, they're implementing it now. There's signs all over alerting everyone to be ready and be prepared for bus patrol. Not only is there the safety, but there's additional technology that goes into the buses, additional cameras and the like that will really enhance our overall bus safety, which is fantastic. I did seek and have a small survey of users in Bucks County. So I reached out to my fellow business administrators and chief financial officers to get some insight. Pen Ridge, Central Bucks, Nishamity, Ben Salem, Quaker Town, and Nishamity all have bus patrol. They're all using it. A number of them are just recently getting underway. Nishamity just started in September, so they're just getting, getting started. And, yeah, Nishamity started in September, I'm sorry. Horsham, Horsham, outside of our county, Horsham, and I guess it was just Upper Morland, I think, are also using it. Horsham started in the early summer. I think they've received a check for $4,400 so far. Ben Salem has been receiving between $60,000 and $80,000 a year for the past three years they've been using it. So there's a lot of numbers moving around. And, you know, a lot of early starts. There's a number of schools that have used it and are getting citations, but haven't collected any money yet either. So our anticipated start date is being finalized.
So as of now, the update on bus patrol is we've got our agreement back from Ivyland Borough. Upper Southampton has it on their agenda for approval tonight. And Wormminster, I believe, canceled their last meeting. It was supposed to be on, so it's on their next meeting. So by the end of the month, I hope to have both those agreements back and signed. Bus Patrol has told me that it'll take somewhere between probably a month and a half to two and a half months, depending on the use of our buses, obviously, because they're gonna have to do it in times that we're not using them. So they'll start a phase in and install on buses when we're not using them. So it'll probably take a month and a half to two and a half months to install in every bus and be complete and fully up and operational.
Question in regards to this. Will we install them ourselves, or is an outsider coming in?
That's, they own the technology and all the equipment. That's their property, so they install it fully and make sure it's fully operational.
When, they install it? Will be during school hours? And would have a bus or a couple buses out of commission for the day, or?
It really depends on if we have, if we need all of our buses, they won't be installing them, obviously. So we're gonna have to work a comprehensive plan out with them and a timeline, whether they're doing it after hours or they're doing it on weekends even. Or when they do it, we're gonna have to work through that plan and see what it looks like once we're all up and ready to go.
But we imagine that they, you know, this isn't the first rodeo for them, so to speak. So I'm sure all bus, all transportation centers have a similar, similar use of buses with some backup buses and then buses that would be going out, right?
Did we ever get an answer to who is storing the data for the internal video images? A constituent had come up and asked that question. And if we could put on the record what is gonna happen so the public knows.
So that data is stored into a cloud. They do not have access to viewing the data. They just get a positive and it's sent to the police department. So we, but we have access to the internal video, which we have now, obviously. But it's in a cloud and we can view it. You know, instead of downloading, taking a chip out, we have it and log into a cloud and can view it.
Okay, so it is under our control.
Yes.
So it follows under our guidance, our internet policies and our, you know, intellectual property policies. So, good. Thank you.
So are we looking around February of 2026, January, February of 2026, that maybe we'll be seeing funds from that? Or that will, the program will start? And maybe June we'll see funds? When will we get some money out of this?
I would hope in the first, be beginning of the first of the year. Somewhere in that timeframe, we'd be, when we, that'll be a great time. We can phase a lot of it in, is maybe let them, allow them to have buses over break. You know, whether it's Thanksgiving or the holiday break. So as soon as I figure out, whenever I get all the agreements back, that's when we can start phasing in the, you know. And we'll have buses running with it probably in a few weeks. Just, I'm talking full implementation of every bus that we're gonna operate. It's gonna take a little time.
Thank you.
Any other questions in regards to the salary increase?
Thank you.
Let me go to Mrs. Crossen first, because Mrs. Lynch already had the podium.
I can yield to you. I can yield to you, Mrs. Lynch.
Well, thank you. Mr. Greenwood, it doesn't seem like you have, not through your own fault, because this is a new program, enough financial information to tell us and the public that this could pay for these increases. You, the one that you cited was in the lower end, $80,000 for three years, I believe.
This per year, yep.
So the thing with it is the other information you have given us, our school districts that are starting this, school districts that don't have, the money's coming in yet.
Yep.
So we really don't have a clear picture of how much we in Centennial will receive until we go through the program and it's working for a while.
That is, that is correct, right? I would agree with that statement. I do think, right, I mean, it would be wonderful if we didn't have anyone running through the stops at buses, right? And that we weren't issuing anyone citations. Unfortunately, that's not true. So we expect to be issuing citations. Everyone seems to be doing that of all the districts I've spoken to. And I don't think we brought bus patrol up or implemented it as a tool to afford the change in rate for drivers, right? I think the change in rate for drivers is based on demand, right? It is based on where we are today. And the savings is also incorporated in the motion, right? Is a reduction in overtime costs.
Correct.
That our, that our mechanics and office staff, who are being called out and are working 60 hours a week, right? It's costs and reduction in cost for outside services, whether that is the intermediate unit, which provides transportation to the district at a fairly high rate, or organizations like bus patrol that we're bringing in trying to reduce the overall IU cost. So I think those costs, those opportunities are much more valuable in our effort to offset the amount of money that the rate, the change in rate will cause, right? So I wouldn't, I'm not standing here in front of you saying I'm hanging my hat on bus patrol, right? I think bus patrol's a great thing to have. I think it provides safety for our students. But I think the other areas in that, the reduction of outside transportation contractors and the reduction in overtime costs are areas that would much more quickly resolve that difference.
Well, I will say that this bus patrol thing sounds fantastic because people, I'm not a bus driver, but I will tell you, the way people drive in this township is insane. And they don't care if it's a bus, a limousine, a hearse. They don't care. They're in a hurry. But I will also state that you have mentioned this as a funding base, and it is in the motion. But I also want to say to the bus drivers, from the time But I also want to say to the bus drivers, from the time, little kids, grandchildren in my case, so excited to get on that bus, you know, and you people know that because they're standing there with their parents, hopefully, and you're cheering, here comes a bus, here comes a bus. That's a warm career that you have. Thank you.
The whole purpose with this new proposal is to increase recruitment of bus drivers, minimize overtime, get the mechanics back to working on the buses where they belong instead of driving buses. Anybody else?
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
I have a couple of questions. The first one, maybe some, I'm not familiar. If a bus route requires a bus aide for that trip and you don't have one available, will the trip still occur or do you have to find someone? How does that work?
A bus driver will do it.
A bus driver will fill in.
Fulfill his need.
But someone has to be in that bus, right? Is that?
Especially if it's required to have an aide, and if there is no aide available, then it would be down to be a bus driver to be in that bus.
Last year, we were informed that a parent was told she couldn't bring her child to school because there wasn't any aide. The child had to stay home. If you remember that in the beginning of last year, the parent, or the end of the year before. So, I'm glad you're saying this because she was told that her child couldn't come to school because there was no aide on the bus for that day.
So, last week, we got an email from a bus, from a family of a bus aide distraught that only the bus drivers were getting the 15% increase. So, then I thought to myself, well, could we do like, split it? Could we split it between people in the bus garage?
Mr. Greenwood, could you address that, please?
I don't know if that's possible, but, I mean...
I'm not sure where the question is, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just wondering, is there something else we can do for the bus aides or the rest of the individuals?
The bus drivers.
Yeah. Yeah, so I just, instead of giving 15% to one, could we break it down between everyone and put us in the middle instead of at the top? Because we did get that email that said the top was $30. I think it was, I don't know who sent the email, was the Weekly Report. It was $30 an hour at Happer Horsham. Could we break it down so everybody gets something?
This is not on the agenda. We have...
Right, I know. I'm speaking as a board director, trying to figure out a concern.
This can be, these things can be addressed, but this specific item was put in place for a very reason.
I am, I am well aware of what I'm reading and what's right in front of me. I'm just making a suggestion, representing Region Two, making of its suggestion.
Can I, can I address this? Well, Mr. Greenwood, still?
I'm done when you're done.
So, we don't have a shortage of bus aides?
No.
As you recall, as you may recall, right, last November, we increased rates for the five hard-to, hard-to-fill positions, right, at that time, right? We've tried numerous different ways to address this issue and this shortage. This isn't, shortage isn't a shortage that came about today. It's not this year's problem. It's a problem, it's sort of nationwide shortage that goes back to COVID days. We have tried very hard to come up with different scenarios, different ways to recruit. We created a van-to-driver, van-to-CDL driver program that we brought individuals in. We trained them while they were actively employed with us and got used to the transportation world, and they were training, and we, they graduated, right? We had a number graduate. We have some that are still with us. We've had some that have left because they can, now they have their CDL, right, they can make $30 down the street. So, we have attempted to do that, right? We did raise the starting rates for bus drivers, for bus aides, for IAs, PCAs, for, what's PCAs? Cooks, I think that was it?
Cooks and Leeds, right, Cooks and Leeds.
Yes.
So...
Last year. So, I mean, I think it is something we've done, and I think as we move forward, going forward, we're going to need to evaluate everyone, but I don't think it's a matter of changing that, right? The $30 an hour rate is just above the median for the most recent salary survey, salary study, excuse me.
So, can I, can I, okay. So, the idea is to increase recruitment and cut down on overtime because a large number of bus drivers are working 50 to 55 hours a week. That's time and a half after 40. The mechanics are working 50 to 60 hours a week, also time and a half after 40. The office staff is working overtime. That's time and a half over 40. That's a lot of overtime.
And don't they all deserve something? You're telling me all these people are working time and a half, but we're only going to recognize one group?
That is, that is not...
That's what you just said.
You were quite concerned at the last board meeting about a $4 million deficit.
So, I'm saying instead of 15% to one, Mr. Goddickson, we break that up to all of the...
That is not on the agenda tonight, so...
But we could make it.
No, we're not, well, that's not what's, what's on here to vote on.
I absolutely understand that.
Okay.
Delated, however, I just would like to make a few brief comments, if I might, Madam President.
Is that all right? On this issue?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm just, I'm just saying, Mr., let me just, I'll be done in two seconds. So, we are having such a difficult time recruiting bus drivers. So, kids aren't getting picked up. We have to make ourselves more...
Competitive.
Excuse me?
Competitive.
Yes, more competitive, and we're not doing that. Do we, in a perfect world, I would love to give everybody a raise, but I'm sure you'd have something to say about that too, Mrs. Crossen, so we can't do that. We don't have the money. But we do have to make sure these kids get to school on time. And I did suggest that you start driving a bus, and you didn't really like that suggestion. Mr. Martin has to speak first.
Completely uncalled for. Obviously, I'm not going to suggest you mix IVs for patients.
It's Mr. Martin's.
Well, you don't know how to do that either, so... That's exactly what I do. No, you're, you don't even want me to start.
Mr. Martin, go ahead.
Looking to argue with anybody about this, I just have a few comments and concerns. That's my only issues of the evening. Number one, I understand the idea of recruiting and the shortage of drivers. I understand how hard the current ones have been working and certainly appreciate it. I don't think, however, that this presentation, as we currently have it, is a complete program of how we're going to address things. If we're going to talk about recruitment, then I don't know why we're backdating the effective date of the resolution because that can have absolutely no effect on recruitment whatsoever when you backdate something before you could even implement it. So, that's, that's one point. Two, I think in, it doesn't pay to try to solve things piecemeal sometimes, and in dealing with one issue, you kind of create two more, which is the rest of our employees who think, based on some of the comments that I've received, and I understand the folks here, what they believe, that they are kind of not being considered here in the whole totality of things. And three, I think we also need to see some actual numbers. It's good to say this is going to be this and this is going to be that. The numbers we were given, which may or may not be accurate, but we were given them just two weeks ago, we're in the middle of salaries for bus drivers. We're not the lowest. We're certainly not the highest. I understand that. And whether or not there could be a phase in of this program, whether or not there could be a bonus system of some type initiated, I don't know. I've never, we've never had a total board discussion to try to come up with the best way to address the two issues. One is recruitment and the other is the current folks that are doing the job. So, for those reasons, I'm not opposed to doing things in both areas, but I don't think that the way it's currently being handled is exactly the best way and the most complete way to do it. And if we're going to increase a budget by a certain amount in the revenue and the expenditure side, we didn't have to increase the budget, and the revenue side by a like amount of money in order to keep the budget where it is. And I haven't seen the numbers to make, I've seen the ideas and the commentary. I haven't seen the numbers other than we got a list of what other districts are paying their, their bus drivers. So, I think I still have some concerns, and I'm not opposed to people getting a due increase and trying to do something to recruit more drivers because we can't compete in the long run. My final comment, if we raise the salaries, fine, and then we tout, we're the highest in wherever. We won't be the highest long, and we can't in the long run compete with Council Rock, New Hope, Central Bucks. We just don't have the salary base in our communities that they have in theirs. And I think we need to go back and come up with a more complete, better plan to help the folks that are here as well as recruit new bus drivers. But thank you very much.
I'm going to let the community comments go. Jean O'Hara, please, you have three minutes. If you could just state your name, what street you live on?
Jean O'Hara, Toll House Road. I'd just like to address that we have taken off and are not allowed to take off in September, October, November, it's coming. I'm supposed to be in a hospital. I have worked 41 hours just to help you folks out. So, not, by us not taking off at all, we're keeping your behinds from drowning. We go, we give every, every effort we can and work and work and work, and we're saving your jobs. We're making you look better, us bus drivers. So, I think it's a disgrace that you will not even, for one iota of a second, especially you, Patty, consider us giving us some more money. I am supposed to be again in a hospital, but I came here. It's that important to me. I have pneumonia. I worked 12 hours yesterday. That's all I really have to say. I would really consider giving us and everybody that deserves it some more money. And what about the $4 million? Mr. Greenwood, you said we have money coming in. Why can't we use that money? Anybody?
Jean, they're not going to, they can't go back and forth with you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We hear you. Mr. Spaduto?
God, I hope she's okay.
I want to try to be a little calmer than my coworker because she does get excited. But all due respect, Mr. Martin, this topic's been up for a month, and you said you don't know what the other districts are getting paid. Well, how about looking around, finding out?
I have a list that we were given, Mr. Spaduto. I'm assuming the list is...
It's my turn to talk. It's my turn to talk. Okay? Okay, I sent you an email too, asking you on another topic and never got an answer from that because I guess, you know, the constituents don't mean anything.
Mr. Spaduto?
So, anyway, every day there's up on our board tells us the dates that we're not allowed to take off. There's not a single day there that you can't take off. We're not, we're not, what you're doing is you're saving the district from failure by voting yes to give us the increase. Voting no is definitely going to start sending drivers to other districts looking for a job, and Wermanster Centennial, the Centennial School District is going to go under. I promise you that, and I don't, it's not a threat, it's reality. So, the 370 that we're asking for, that you're giving us, is well-deserved. It's not a handout. As Jean mentioned, and I can give you 30 other more drivers that are doing the same thing that she's doing. Why? To keep our district afloat and not go into failure because that's the people that we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spaduto.
Mr. Hartline?
Aye.
And then after that, we'll take the vote.
I think Mr. Ginhardt had his hand up as well.
Oh, did you?
I was just going to call for the vote because this is going all over.
All right, so, the savings here is going to come with overtime and deletion of routes that we are basically outsourcing to the IU. Their rate is considerably higher than ours, all right? It's, go back and look for videos. The bus drivers have the utmost respect of this board, okay? I mean, we have said time and time again, in many instances, you are the first smiling face that a child may see in the morning, and you're the last smiling face that a child may see when they get off the bus. I would not want your drive, job. I would be a nervous wreck driving students around like that. That would just, I'd be in the hospital with an ulcer, all right? If we have drivers driving 50, 55 hours a week, CDL drivers, I know like truck drivers have a maximum number of hours that they're allowed to drive for safety of individuals, you know, it then also, in my mind, brings up a concern of safety of our students, that you have drivers that are tired, sick, and it's very admirable, but if you have pneumonia, you need to be in the hospital. You need to, you need to be getting well because that's the primary, your primary need is to take care of yourself so that you can take care of our children, all right? So, I'm sorry to hear that, all right? That is not, okay? As far as additional raises to other positions that are out there, those, that group of, and I'm not calling it a collective bargaining unit because it is not, but that group of individuals, their salary is up this year for review, correct, Mr. Greenwood?
Correct.
Yes, so that process for them is going to be starting as well. And we have within the last year, in at least one occasion, I believe twice, given raises in those categories because we had spent some money and did some offsetting investigations. I think we had a hay report that we had processed or a hay group or somebody similar to that that maybe we want to dig up as well for the coming budget discussions. I know that Mr. Greenwood, myself, and Dr. Lico Ball are going to be starting the budgeting conversation this week for next year already. So, that's certainly something that is going to be playing in mind with it. You know, the retroactive for two weeks, I understand that, Mr. Martin, I get, I get it, but I don't know that the two weeks is, you know, we're going to be looking at that significant amount of money. I think the big savings here is going to come from elimination of overtime. If you are paying somebody 55 hours a week at time and a half, one employee offsets 40 hours of overtime from two employees. So, it pays, that just pays for itself. And if this helps with recruiting and retention, that much the better. I mean, you know, being a, a family community only gets you so far when you have bills that you have to pay, and we understand that, and I understand that. I mean, I'm self-employed. Don't work, don't eat. It's an interesting concept, okay? So, that's, you know, that's my two cents on this.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Hartline? Mrs. Roush, can we do a roll call on this matter? Now, it was mentioned that there is...
Mr. Hartline, what is the amount of overtime, the total amount of overtime for bus drivers?
Mr. Greenwood, do you have that number?
Can we take care of the vote now?
Can we, well, let me pause for one second. Can you provide that information in the next few days to the board, the amount of overtime that is being paid out in transportation? Thank you. It'll be in the Friday weekly update.
Mrs. Roush, roll call, please.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
I abstain primarily because I believe that the aides should also be incorporated in increase, even though we have a deficit, which I will address later on. You do a wonderful job, but it has to be fair in my mind. Thank you.
Mr. Ginhardt?
Yes.
Dr. McGuire?
Thank you, bus drivers and aides, yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
I abstain for the previous reason I provided.
What is the previous reason? Because you have to have a reason to abstain. You can't just abstain.
Yes, I'm aware of that in the discussion that we had before when I spoke about the bus aides. Do you remember that? That's why, because it's not going to everyone in the bus garage. It's just going, the 15% is going to one group.
Each different position.
That is my explanation.
We only need to vote for now.
Mr. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Martin?
I will abstain for the reasons that I did state about nine minutes ago.
Okay. Motion passes six, three.
Fleming, I want to say something. Okay?
Mrs. Brancato has a comment.
Thank you for coming, bus drivers. Um, we, we, if we, in a perfect world, we would be able to give everybody a raise, which would be wonderful. And absolutely, the bus aides deserve more money, but they're, the agreement is coming soon and they will be taken care of. Nobody's looking to leave anybody out like others are trying to insinuate. Nobody's trying to do that. And the, one particular bus aide whose husband sent a letter, she is somebody that I love dearly because I've known her since I was 14 years old. I would never do anything to hurt her. We have to get more bus drivers in here because we cannot have kids not getting a bus in the morning because there's just not enough of you to go around. So, thank you. And let's move forward, Fran.
Actually, Mrs.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to speak and didn't want to interrupt. But the other thing I will say, and I, I made mention of this at the very beginning of the year at our convocation, that one of the most powerful things about our district is that, is our interdependence and that everyone's role fits seamlessly together around one of our most important missives, which is student learning. And one of the reasons that this proposal came forward is because we're trying to address a very pressing need in the district and that is learning loss. And everyone in their roles, and we talk about this as a cabinet all the time, plays a role in causing learning to happen in our district. When students are not getting to school on time, it impacts learning. When teachers are not able to instruct students because of them arriving late, it impacts learning. It also impacts our families. We have families in our district, many of whom, as in many districts, rely on transportation to pick up their children, to transport them safely. And I thank our drivers and I thank all of our employees, everyone who works to keep our children safe in whatever capacity you serve our district and our children. But we have to address the issue of kids arriving to school late. We have to address the issue of our children coming home late or not getting a bus at all and having to sometimes miss school because of that. And we do have an obligation to address that. And sometimes those obligations run counter to what is convenient or what is necessarily budgeted for. But I thank the board for its consideration of this. I thank our drivers. I thank all of our employees. There's a lot of things that we do have to address and I respect what the board has brought up tonight and I appreciate that dialogue. And I think that dialogue is what helps us to make good decisions as a governor, or you as a governing board. But tonight with this vote is the first step in addressing learning loss. And that is one of our most important missions as a district. And so I just wanted to mention that point that we are trying to make sure that we're doing everything in our power to make kids successful academically. Thank you.
Going on to policies, Mr. Ginhardt?
Yep. This will be mercifully short. We just have five policies that are presented for initial distribution and nothing for adoption. That's it.
Moving. Okay. All right. We have on the agenda, the treasurer's report, a couple highlights from that. Despite the fact that we've still yet to receive any funds from the state, we have managed to amass $434,000 in investment income so far this year. So we are actually trending a little bit above schedule despite the fact that there's probably a rough estimate of about $100,000 we have lost so far from investment income from not receiving any funds from the state. So we are trending in the right direction for those numbers. Keeping in mind that last meeting, we approved, the board approved a half a million dollars in additional special ed funding for students that needed to be placed in, in specific services. Special education costs are continuing to cripple us. Last year, we overestimated our special education funding by $2.5 million, which was the amount that we were originally anticipating the budget being over. So essentially, it was a dollar neutral budget by the time the, those services were not needed. I know our special education department is doing a Herculean job addressing what is 25% of our population having special needs or requiring IEPs or some type of services. So that is a major cost driver that we are looking at. Hopefully, something from the state will break at some point in time. They're working on other legislation. The budget does not seem to be moving anywhere at this time. So that's an important note. So for approval tonight, we have the approved bill list and the pending bill list. If anybody would like either of them pulled, if not, I will read them for approval. Seeing none, be resolved. The Centennial School District, Board of School Directors, 9.2 approves the pending bill list as per the attached. 9.3 accepts the pre-approved bill list as per the attached.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Godikson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine, zero, zero. Thank you very much.
For discussion and comments? Yes, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mrs. Brancato. I just have a question.
Sure.
I, I just heard, I think I heard, if I'm paying attention, the superintendent say we are experiencing a learning loss. Every presentation, if I recall, that I've heard from Mr. Rutz and the others that used to do that, Mr. Gabriel and everyone since COVID ended for the last three years have had positive test results as far as our learning in various categories that they present. We've seen that presentation many times. Is that changed or is that continuing? I don't know what learning loss we are experiencing. I've never heard about one.
No, I could, I can address that. Thank you, Mr. Martin. No, just, just to clarify, no, to the contrary. In fact, we're very excited because in, in subsequent meetings, as a little sneak preview, Mr. Rutz will be providing not only an ed committee, but then also for the entirety of the board. To the contrary, we are seeing not only that growth that, that the district has talked about, but we're starting to see the achievement as well. And I believe that that will continue. My comment that I made at the, at the end of the vote was that when a child is not transported to school on time and misses 30 or 40 minutes of a class, that's, that's a loss of seat time. That's a loss of that opportunity to learn in that moment. We're not seeing declines in our achievement, to the contrary. We're not experiencing learning loss across the board comprehensively. But anytime a child is not in a seat receiving instruction is a missed opportunity. And that, that was the point that I was trying to make. And if I, if I wasn't clear on that, that was my error. But to the contrary, we are continuing to see that growth in achievement. You're welcome.
Is there anybody else? Mrs. Lynch, please keep it brief. Thank you.
Yes, a reminder I should have done at the beginning of the meeting. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So ladies in the audience, ladies at home, please go have your mammogram. You don't know how important this is until it affects your family. Thank you.
Mrs. Lynch, may I tack something onto that as well? I actually know a male that passed away from breast cancer.
Yes.
So it is something that plays both sides.
Thank you. Mr. Hartline, thank you. A second thing I have is actually directed to Mr. Greenwood. What was the ending balance at the conclusion of a perjutary period? I, I thought, but I could be in our, it was 6.4 million deficit.
The deficit was, I think, $4 million, four and change.
I'm having trouble hearing you. What?
Four and change.
So now I keep hearing 4 million. So would you please explain to me in elementary verbiage the change?
I'm not sure there is a change, but I will, I will look it up for you.
Well, if the, if, if the past two meetings, and it could be more, I keep hearing 4 million as the deficit. And previous to that, it was higher. I would think there's a change.
And if the board is amenable, I would just ask, I know Mr. Greenwood doesn't always have this information at, at the ready. We can certainly provide that information to the board.
Okay. Excuse me. If I'm putting you on the spot.
The budget deficit?
Excuse me.
$4.5 million. $4.5 million. $4,542,696 was the deficit.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood.
Would you be kind enough to give me a detailed report? Not thousands of pages, just a little explanation in writing to my home, please? I would appreciate it.
Sure. I, the presentations are live, so I will send you what we shared.
Yes.
At the board meetings.
Correct. You're right.
What are we saying? I'm sorry, sir, Mrs. Lynch, that what you're asking for, and Mr. Greenwood just said that we have already talked about some of those at board meetings. You might, so if you go back to all the other agendas, et cetera, in the last, I guess, six months, you'll find those documents you're asking for. So it might be just easier just to do that. Just look at there.
I think if we just embed them in the Friday update as well as providing the direct links for Mrs. Lynch, that would probably be the easiest method to go by.
Mr. Hartline, I'm not looking for a montage of, of information.
If we move back to last board meeting, Mrs. Crossen was so kind to bring that number up for us.
So that's the end of my questions. And for anybody who has additional information, thank you.
Mr. Ginhardt, would you like to do 11.1 district policy report?
Sure, why not? We last met on September 16th and the policies that were distributed tonight for initial reading were talked about and gone over. I'd like to remind everyone that we still have openings on Citizens Policy Committee. So if anybody wants to be involved in that, you can email Mrs. Roush. She'll hook you up. And for anybody who wants to see our policies, they are available on the website in Board Docs. You go to our website, School Board, and under School Board is Board Docs. And you can see all the policies and the administrative regulations if you have any questions on how things are run in the district. Our next meeting was moved. It was October 21st. There's a conflict because of interviews for an HR director. It has been moved to the next day, is the 22nd at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Ginhardt. Mr. Godikson, please.
All right. I'm going to, the last Bucks County IU board meeting took place September 16th. It was held at the Lower South Early Learning Center down in Feistville. It is a nice, beautiful facility that is serving close to 400 students, including our students that were placed at Davis Elementary School in the past. But because we're running out of space, you know, they have, you know.
Sorry. I appreciate, I will go back and start all over again. The last Bucks County IU meeting took place on September 16th at the Lower South Early Learning Center. It is a facility that is beautiful and serving close to 400 students. Our former Davisville Elementary Early Childhood Program has now been moved down to that location because we were running out of space here in Centennial. We also, the IU also provided service for the Leadership Program and are now offering a new session where two to three stu, teachers and staff members from the district, you know, will be offered these Leadership Cohort Program at the IU. Their first program, you know, took place back in 2017 and they have until now had 229 alumnis go through that program. They also continue to work on enhancing security and safety within the IU, which is, you know, placed throughout the county and not just within a school district. They have also created a new, or rented a new space at the Pearl S. Buck Elementary School in Nishamani School District. So they are now able to group them more age-appropriate with elementary school students at Pearl S. Buck School and the secondary students at the Samuel Everett School. And on top of that, they are providing support and services for the district act, District Act 13, educator effectiveness training and other new teacher learning module, modules. That's it. Our next meeting is October 21st.
Mrs. Crossen, please, PSBA.
Certainly. Very exciting news. Public education in Pennsylvania is evolving and the Keystone Education Report is where the conversation begins. PSBA's, PSBA's new half-hour television program features in-depth interviews with superintendents, school board directors, legislators, and other influential direct, oh, other influential voices. Episodes air on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month, 7:00 PM on Pennsylvania Cable Network. Members can also view a recording of each episode at PSBA's YouTube channel the Friday after it. So anything you have missed from PSBA, you can now watch on TV.
Channel nine.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Hartline?
All right. So Centennial Education Foundation, upcoming events. There is still time to register for the October 25th puzzle competition. You have until, the deadline is this coming Thursday, October, I'm sure, I'm sorry, this coming Friday, October 15th. So a lot of fun. And even if you don't want to participate, for a minimal entrance fee, $10 for a spectator, you can come in and watch these people put puzzles together in lightning fast speed. And there's raffle baskets, 50-50s, a snack bar, et cetera. All goes to a good cause towards the Centennial Education Foundation. We did introduce our new superintendent our last meeting. And our next meeting is next Tuesday, the 21st. Rolling into Legislative Council, I already kind of touched on it. Not much is getting done in Harrisburg as far as the budget's concerned. The latest it's gone has been, believe it or not, Christmas. So we'll see if we have one prior to that. School districts are really starting to feel the pinch throughout the, the Commonwealth. We are still fortunate. As of right now, we have approximately $99 million in our coffers, but that is because our taxpayers pay their dollars, their tax bills on time. And we have brought in so far this year in tax revenue $85 million. The remaining balance is fund balance less the money that we've already spent going out. But, you know, we should be receiving about, I want to say about $700,000 a week from the state on average, money that would be invested that we are not earning any investment income on. And to date, I estimate that we're probably down about $100,000. And keeping in mind that that money is going to the state coffers, not And keeping in mind that that money is going to the state coffers, not to the local school districts. So hopefully, something will happen in the near future.
Mr. Ginhardt?
Yeah, a couple of things for MBIT. These can all be found at the MBIT website, which is MBIT.org. If any student who have completed eighth grade want to see what tech school, MBIT is all about, you can shadow all twenty-one programs that we have there. Reach out at MBIT.org, sign up, you can, you can look at the trade, see what the programs are about, and see if it's for you and if it's something you want to do. Also letting people know that MBIT has a salon that is staffed by senior students, it's called Salon Extreme. They do a great job, and prices are really reasonable, and that will be opening soon. I don't know, I have the exact date yet, but keep an eye on the website for when that is opening. Also to let families know that Little Bucks is the daycare center that is operated at MBIT, currently enrolling eighteen months old to five years old. You can, again, get that at MBIT.org if you're looking for quality daycare. And two shout-outs to, one, to the Assistant Director of MBIT, Lauren Doherty. She presented at the National Career Technical Leadership Association Conference at the Women in Leadership section of the conference. She did an outstanding job, she was one of only three presenting, I think. And that is nationwide, so this is our Bucks County local technical school presenting at a nationwide conference, so that's very impressive, especially when you consider the size of some technical schools that attend that thing. And also, the director, Dr. Covell, he is quite the podcaster, and he did several podcasts from that event, so if you want to get any updates on what's going on, go to MBIT.org, and you can find those podcasts. And one final thing to tag on to what Mr. Hartline was talking about with the budget, school districts are hurting considerably because of the budget impasse. Career and technical schools feel it even more acutely because they are not funded the same way that a local school district is funded. They don't have reserve accounts like we do to keep things going on a daily basis until the state gets their act together. Sending school districts pay money to MBIT to send students, but it's, it's basically, it's a hand-to-a-mouth kind of setup, so they don't have the reserve, so they're going to feel it much faster than a school district is trying to keep the lights on and keep classes in session. So, you know, just ask people if you want to get involved with this, contact your legislators. People that are going to career and technical schools are going to feel this first, and they're going to feel it worse if this doesn't get worked out.
If I could just say, second here, you know, tag on a little bit on Mr. Hartline, our thirteenth school district superintendent and three technical school board directors or directors, did we at the IU send a letter to all the state legislators in the county to encourage movement on the budget?
Thank you. Thank you. Communications, I think we've done that. Additional community comments, there are none. Schedule of school board meetings, calendar of events, Mr. Ginhardt?
Okay. The Education and Student Services Committee meeting will be held Wednesday, October fifteenth at twelve PM here in the boardroom. Finance Committee will meet Thursday, October sixteenth at one PM in the boardroom. Operations Committee will meet Friday, October seventeenth at eleven AM in the boardroom. On Friday, October seventeenth, it will be early dismissal, grades K-12 for an in-service day. The BCIU will have its board meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-first at seven PM at BCIU. MBIT will hold its Executive Council Committee meeting of the whole, Monday, October twenty-seventh at five-thirty at MBIT. We will hold our Committee of the Whole meeting here Thursday, October twenty-eighth at seven PM. Monday, November third, early dismissal, grades six to twelve. MBIT will hold its Executive Council meeting Monday, November third at five-thirty at MBIT. Tuesday, November four, all schools are closed, it's an in-service day for elections, and we will meet again Tuesday, November eleventh at seven PM here in the boardroom for the work regular meeting. That's it.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Hey. I'm your lady.